Okay, good evening. This is the Board of Selectmen's Special Meeting for the Purpose of Budget Review at East Lime Town Hall, Upper Meeting Room. It's March 5th, and it's about 5:32. You can rise if you say so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so first off this evening, we will have a Board of Education budget presentation. Yes, please.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. I'm Eric Baumann, the Board Chair. Appreciate you kind of listening and hearing how we came about this budget and where we are. I'll say a few words, and then I'll pass it over to Jeff. He'll go through some details. I think it's worth taking a step back and just like, how did we get to this point? So, we start, our process starts, believe it or not, in November. And it's a long process, and part of it is the November-December timeframe gives us a chance to brainstorm a bit, come up with ideas. Mariana provides us kind of a high level of what things are looking like and what the number may look like for the following fiscal year. And that gives us a chance to think about, okay, what could we do differently? We have a little time to think, process, come up with some ideas of, you know, what we would like. We can also give questions to Jeff and his team to say, can you look into this a little more? Hey, what's going on in this area? This might be an area we can do differently. So, that's kind of how we start in November-December, and then in January, we get into the real grinding of coming up with this budget. As you know, can see, the budget increase is 6.72. It's really driven by things that are hard to manage. So, some of the big, transportation, pretty big increase, other districts and around there. State and broader than our state are having bus costs are going up, and they're going up higher than a rate of inflation. We have some special ed costs that are coming through about $500,000, and that can, one year can go higher, one year can go lower, depending if a student moves into town, a student moves out of town. Those can vary pretty significantly, and we've had a few move into town, and that's $500,000 that there's not much we can do about. That is the cost for that. And then our normal increases for salaries, our health insurance, we have matched with the town, so it's at 11% right now. Hopefully, the state comes in lower. If it comes in lower, ours drops, the town drops. We're just going to be whatever it needs to be. So, we don't, we're not, we haven't, we wanted to match a few years ago. We didn't match the town. We were a little, we thought it would be lower, town had a higher, it ended up higher, and then we were kind of working against the grain of like, trying to figure out how to manage that increase. So, we are, we try to stay in lockstep with the town on the health insurance, and if that comes down, it helps the entire town. So, those are some of the big drivers of the increase. And in order to come to the 6.72, we probably started at eight something. Superintendent came in at 6.99, 6.98, something like that, and we ended up at 6.72 as a Board of Ed. And that 6.72 includes that our health insurance, we originally thought it'd be 9%, went up to 11%. So, we had to find actually additional funding to get to the 6.72. But to get to the 6.72 was hard, and we had to, we've eliminated six open roles, so no staff reductions, or no people will lose their jobs in this budget, but we did eliminate six open roles. We consolidated some positions of a way to deliver our technology.
Wait, eliminated six open?
Open positions, so people, they're not filled. So, in other words, for instance, one teacher's retiring at the end of the year, we're not going to fill that position, something like that. So, it's not, they're not losing a job, it's, but it's, it's a role that we would have rehired, and we're not. So, there's six of those that we have eliminated or removed from this budget already. And then, we did consolidate, and we're able to get some roles in how we deliver our technology, and we found $40,000 in savings in how we can, the leadership for our technology. So, we have come up with a whole bunch of ways, some creative, to come up with this Our challenge, and you'll hear more from Jeff on the details, our challenge is, is how we go down from there. And we don't have many levers to pull, to go down from there. We're not looking at elimination, not of open roles, but of people's, you know, staff who are in roles right now. And that's somewhat where we are. You can also look across districts, if you read the day, they actually publish it pretty, almost every day. Almost every district in the area is in that 6%, 7% increase for this year. So, I think it's, the same things are hitting most of these towns. So, that's where we are. I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Newton, where he can go through some of the details and stuff, and happy to take any questions. But that's how we got to this point, and kind of some of the big drivers that got us here.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Baumann. Appreciate it. Let me first start by thanking all of our staff, everybody across our district, for the work that they engage in to get us to this point. You know, this process starts very early, you know, end of September. We, schools are already starting to think about putting together, you know, their school budgets, and then it comes up, you know, to us from there. And some great work happens between my team at Central Office, and that's Kim Davis, our Director of Student Services, Annalee Spaziano, our Assistant Superintendent, and Mariana Stevens, our Director of Finance, who does an unbelievable job in getting numbers together pretty quickly, which allows us to roll into our series of steps that we go through as a Board of Education, as well as administratively. You can see on the, I'm referring to the slide. I gave you a hard copy, so you could take a look at that. Yeah, there you go. On page two, just our timeline of the work that, you know, Mr. Baumann referenced, and I'll reference, with the budget workshops. The first workshop in November, November 18th, and then December 16th. So, we have two workshops out of the gate. We've been doing this for years. It helps us really kind of align, show where we're at with just rolling everything over from the previous year's budget, and then we work, you know, from there as a collaborative group. We often try and invite, you know, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, Board of Finance members have joined us in the past as well. Then I present the budget on January 13th, which I did, you know, this year, and then we go into deliberations. We, Board of Ed held deliberations on the 27th and on February 10th to engage in discussions. Then we had our public hearing, where the Board of Ed adopted the budget after the public hearing on February 24th. So, cost drivers. In every budget, every year, there's always a story. And, you know, this is my 10th year presenting the budget here in East Lime, and every year has been a little bit of a different, a different story. But oftentimes, you know, some of the story components remain the same. Salaries and benefits are always our, you know, our biggest cost driver. You can see that 47.32% makes up salaries, and employee benefits is 27.5%. And Mr. Baumann mentioned, we were at around that 8%, 9%, but we moved our insurance up to 11%. We're aligned with the town. We're truly hoping that that insurance number is going to drop from the state partnership plan. We're keeping our fingers crossed, because one percentage point is $75,000 for us. So, we can kind of do the math, if we drop down to maybe 7% or 8%, you know, each percentage point times 75,000 helps immensely. So, we are truly keeping our fingers crossed, but we won't know that until about probably April timeframe. Yeah, so we're awaiting those numbers. The other two big cost drivers, and Mr. Baumann alluded to both of them, is transportation and our student services, our special education costs. Tuition costs, some outplace costs for students, $557,530. The number, that number we inherited this year, we weren't expecting that, and as every district knows, it could go one way or the other. We could have students that cost us for services move out, and we can have students that move in. And once, you know, when they move in, we're responsible for the cost. When they move out, the next district that takes them in is then responsible for the cost. So, that was 13.83% of the increase. And then transportation, our busing contract, inflation, and transportation is up pretty much for everybody. So, those are the major cost drivers that are driving this 6.72% increase. So, kind of how we got here, back during those workshops, when we, you know, in November, we rolled everything over, we were at a 8.26% increase on page four. That was at the November budget workshop. That preliminary budget number was $64,009,83,523. We then go back and do our work. We scour through the budget, we sometimes will find duplicates of things between maybe a building sent up, or we had something at Central Office. So, we take care and clean all that up, look for further reductions, and that got us down to that 6.99% increase. And that was brought forward at the December workshop, so we talked through that process. And then I brought the 6.99% to the Board, and that was ultimately brought down to the 6.72, which is a $64,057,400 budget. Fixed costs, we show this slide every year, so we can continue to reiterate, and actually, we didn't show it last year, once somebody asked about it. So, we brought it back, because fixed costs are so important. You know, our budget, the district budget, operating budget relies, you know, 98.8% of it is focused on contracts, and having contract obligations. So, we can't just simply, you know, eliminate that or change those. Most of those are negotiated. Inflation rides some of those contract requirements as well. So, we have a small sliver that we can play with, with supplies, textbooks, and software. And believe me, we scour through that, and we make sure that folks are getting what they need, but no more. So, we're being fiscally responsible in that sense. So, fixed costs are really the driver of, you know, of our budget. So, just to recap quick, you know, it is, it's a 6.72% increase that the Board did adopt, and that's the $64,057,400. A little bit of a budget history for you on page seven, so you can kind of see what that preliminary budget was, that we initially have some discussions on. That's that maroon on the far left of each year in the bar graph, and again, this gives us kind of that three-year and the projected for next year, or adopted Board of Ed for next year. My proposed budget, you can see for each year, and then the Board of Education, you know, adopted budget. So, it just gives you a little bit of a history of where we've, where we've been. And, you know, 2023, '24 was a pretty tough year. We had some higher numbers and higher budgets there. We did better for this current year, when we were negotiating and working through things last year, especially given health insurance came in much lower. I think we had a 2% increase for this current year. So, that helped immensely, been able to drop, you know, that number down. Again, we're hopeful that will happen, you know, for next year, but we won't know for, until we get into late April. Projected future enrollment, just to give a snapshot of this, oftentimes, we get questions about, you know, where your numbers are across the district. We are holding pretty steady. We have had a decline over the last couple of years, small decline. That bubble is a bubble at the high school right now, so we can, we've tracked that. That was at the middle school. It moved up, it's at the high school now. But you can see from '26, or really '27, '28, things start to climb back up some, puts us back just under, you know, 2,600 students, looking out to 2032, '33. So, no real fluctuations up or down, which is, you know, a good problem to have, I guess, because we're not, you know, having to make a ton of reductions versus, you know, hiring a bunch of staff either. So, we're, we're pretty, pretty, pretty level for the next couple of years, other than, again, a bubble at the high school right now.
Quick question?
Yes.
How do you determine the projected future enrollment?
We get that information from outside sources. So, each year, we get an enrollment projection. We've used Malone McBroom, this is from NASDAQ, so every year NASDAQ sends us an enrollment. See, they do, any district that is an affiliate of NASDAQ, then they'll provide it for you for free.
Okay, great.
So, yeah, we, yep, no problem. Shared services and cost mitigation efforts, we have tried more and more to increase our efforts to share services, and this is important, sharing across districts, across towns, with, between the Board of Ed and the town of East Lime as well. So, you can see on this sheet are a number of shared services that we engage in, in efforts to try and save money. We speak specifically to like, with Waterford. We, for this year, we lost VNA, the Visiting Nurses Association, told us, not this past January, but the January before, that they were moving out, basically. So, what we did, we got creative and said, let's hire and share a nursing supervisor between the two districts to save money, and then we both have our own set of nurses that we hired. So, it was a good move. The nursing supervisor's done a great job going between two districts, and that's been, you know, a savings for both Waterford and for East Lime. The, if you look down, kind of on your right there, on the bottom, regional high school course collaboration, right now, we're taking four students from Waterford for our EMT course that we offer. And next year, we're planning on sending up to six students for their automotive course that they run, because they have an automotive area in their high school with a car lift, and, you know, we don't have that. So, that's a great opportunity for us to be able to share, pay a minimal fee between districts, and have an offering for kids, rather than us trying to say, let's put in a car lift, or, you know, Waterford having to pay for having an EMT course sort of thing. On top of that, the Regional Remote Learning Project tab in the middle, that's a, I talked about that a little bit last year. It's finally getting to the point where it's, it's going to get off the ground for the fall of next year, where we have six districts that we are trying to share online opportunities for kids, online courses for kids. So, that's at the high school level. So, that is underway. It was a lot of red tape to get it off the ground, but we're excited about that, that option, you know, for kids too. And Salem, just to mention about Salem, you know, we provide Salem School District with oversight of their food services. Our director covers their food services, our director of facilities covers Salem's facilities, and our security director covers security for Salem. So, and Salem pays us a fee for those services. So, we've been able to work that out. So, we're generating some revenue, you know, from Salem and providing them, you know, a great service with the superb individuals that we have, you know, in our district. So, so there's a couple other on there, but I know, you know, time is short tonight, so I just wanted to make mention, these are important things. We continue to look for increased avenues to have shared services across districts and across towns. So, looking at next year, this is a very minimalistic budget as pertains to any asks. Really, it's trying to hold on to the services and the staff members, you know, that we have. We're all doing a marvelous job. There is a need, though, at our middle school to have an increase in a school psychologist. We need one additional school psychologist at the middle school level. Case loads are very high there. It's probably no new news to any of you or anyone out there that, you know, special ed services, requirements for services, they've all gone up, mental health, et cetera. So, we are in need of an additional school psychologist. Additionally, a family and consumer science teacher at the high school, we need to go from a .4 to a .6, family and consumer science teacher. And one of the main reasons for that is a nice unfunded mandate from the state as it pertains to the financial literacy course that we are obligated at the high school level to provide, you know, to all students. Any high school student now has to take the financial literacy course, which is a really good thing, it's not a bad thing, it's just, we have to pay for it. So, so we needed four additional sections at the high school to be able to fit that in, so every high school student, somewhere within, you know, their four years, they're taking a financial literacy course. Retirements and anticipated vacancies, you know, we don't have, we're kind of a lull right now. We don't have a lot of retirements. We have two at the elementary for next year, and we have one technology education teacher retiring at the high school. Absolutely need to fill, you know, that position. It's extremely important. So, we, we don't have a lot of new staff that will be coming in. You know, our existing staff does a great job, will remain with us. And that's pretty much it. Again, short set of slides, just want to share, and then kind of, I know you've got deliberations tonight, open up to any questions that you might have, and we can go from there.
Just a quick one. Can you just explain, if you can, the Regional Remote Learning Project? Is that for kids like to take college classes, or just high school classes?
It's, it's high school classes for credit. So, you've got Old Saybrook, Waterford, New London, East Lime, Learn, and Regening Team, old lime, old lime. So, we are all, and Learn is kind of the hub, so it's like a consortium, so we all kind of buy in, and then each district has an offering of courses that a student, let's say, an Old Saybrook student, they're a smaller district, we might have a course that they don't offer, their student can remote into this course, it's going to be offered in the evenings or on a Saturday, could be offered over the summer. So, we have a set number of hours that align to being able at the state level to be approved for credit. So, it's just a unique way to offer.
So, it's not like they're zooming into like, your regular class?
No, no, that can't happen, yeah.
Okay, that's what I was, I understand.
Yeah, there's none of that that's allowed for the state. So, this is separate. So, it's, it's both, majority of it is a Zooming component, but there is going to be some onsite learning that will take place too, as part of the coursework.
Okay, and then one more question.
Yeah.
You said, the school psychologist at East Lime Middle School, you wanted to hire another one?
Yes.
How many do you have there now?
We have two there now, so we're looking for a third, and Mrs. Davis is here, and we have some of the caseloads range from about 30 to 35 students, I believe.
No, up to 42.
Okay, we're up to 42 students now, so. Caseloads are very high, and to be able to do all the testing that is required, it's too much on our current two staff members, so we are in desperate need of that third, that third counselor, or psychologist, I'm sorry.
Do any of those students, like, do the parents like, take them outside the school for like, counseling, or is this just something the school, like, how does that work?
Well, counseling is a little bit different, because it's a psychologist.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, testing that might go into identification of, you know, a disability of some sort, some kind of the components a psychologist does, yeah.
Okay, and then you want to just hire one family and consumer science teacher?
We are going to go from a .4 to a .6, so basically, we're hiring an additional .6 of a person, but it's, we're able to turn into just hiring a 1.0. So, we're giving up what was a .4, adding a .6, and making it a 1.0. Due to that, the financial literacy course.
Okay.
And that's all that we would be looking for, for, you know, for new staff.
Yeah, no, I understand, I just was trying to understand it. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, no problem, man, yep.
So, did you say for the middle school, the caseload, 42 students roughly?
Forty-two students, Mrs. Davis, roughly is the average.
Yeah, it varies. I mean, that's a, that's a good solid number for purposes, because new kids are being tested and qualified all the time, so that's why the number is a moving target, but 42 is about where they each sit right now.
So, it's roughly 42 for each of the existing psychologists?
Yes, so 84 students being serviced, yeah.
And I'm sure we have a general idea, how many students might they counsel in a day, roughly?
It depends on if they have a group or individuals. I can tell you that when they do testing and evaluation, that usually comprises about 10 hours worth of work, in terms of working with a student, collecting information from families and teachers, as well as writing the report. They attend PPT meetings, and then also directly counsel students in terms of social skill development and coping skills.
Thank you.
Just to give you a little perspective too, Roseanne, our current identified student population is sitting around 527 students now, so our prevalence rate is closing in on 20%. That's gone up, you know, I think roughly it was around 12% 10 years ago. So, you can see every year, it's just, and the state has done the same thing, and districts. I'm sure every time you pick up the paper and you read about a budget, you're hearing about special education costs, and those are services, you know, we need to provide and do the best we can for students. But, yeah, 527, I think was the last count roughly of students that we have identified.
Across all?
Across our entire, roughly 2,500 count of students. So, you can, you can do the math there. And then you have 504 students too, so I think we have just under 300 504 students that receive 504 services as well.
And what is 504, how does that differentiate?
It's under the American Disabilities Act, so a student that has, you know, an IEP that ends at age 22, a student who has a 504, that could go on with them for life sort of thing. So, that student might have a 504 for, you know, a meta, might have diabetes or something of that nature, you know, something more medical.
So, it's more of a medical?
In a sense, yeah, it varies, yeah.
But it does fall underneath special ed.
But it, well, it's, yeah, it's kind of a different category. It's similar, but it's a different category under ADA. Yeah, but, but those are students that we have, we have to provide, so we have to have meetings for, and psychologists might attend, and so.
So, in these, these programs, I assume we're getting some reimbursement from the state?
Yes.
Through the federal funds?
So, we get, yep, that's a good question for special education costs, for, I think for students that are outplaced usually, where you have a much higher threshold, generally over $100,000, we will get excess cost dollars back from the state. However, that percentage has decreased. We just are right at 60% was this year's reimbursement cost for excess cost. Now, we hope that, actually, you've all been reading, the governor's $40 million that the governor's wasn't excited about. I don't know where that landed. I thought maybe there was an agreement where we're going to see some of that money. That would net us an additional $86,000 for this current year, if that 40 million goes through. But we do, it's, it's not enough, Roseanne, to help offset costs, but it is a small pot of money that we get back for our most expensive students.
So, we spend the money and then hope that the state?
We spend the money and, yes, and then, yep, and then the state reimburses us.
Well, you know, we're all very concerned about what's happening at the federal level, which trickles down to the state level.
Yes.
So, the fact that we pay upfront and then hope to get the percentage back.
And the percentage varies too. I mean, that's, we used to get upwards of, was it 86% was the highest? Yeah, about, what was it, like, five years ago and six years ago? We were at 86% of a reimbursement, and this year it's 60%. So, there's the other fight that, you know, it should be fully funded, and we all, well, most of us feel that way, but that would help offset.
So, the psychologist position that is requested, would that be eligible for any state reimbursement?
No, no, that's just, no, just a position that's, that's needed.
So, are we, so we are getting money from the state for assistance, which is coming, first of all, from the federal level. The federal level, we don't get any money directly. Is that correct?
Well, it, it goes through the state, so IDA funds go through the state, but the state then disperses, you know, that funding to us. So, I'll call this, Roseanne, a combined kind of federal and state dollar amount, we get about $567,000 roughly?
About $568,000.
$568,000. Yeah, yep, so that helps offset a few positions in districts. So, that's five teacher positions, and most of those are special education positions, and five paraprofessional positions, correct? Yeah. So, those dollars, you know, do help. We don't want to see those obviously go away, because, you know, those are positions that are, you know, are obviously needed to support kids.
So, is this money distributed throughout the school here, or do we file reports at the end of the school year to get reimbursed for?
You want to?
We file for reimbursement on a quarterly basis.
Okay. Sorry to ask the detailed questions, but?
No, it's okay.
Again, federal level, you don't have any contingency account in your budget?
We have, no, we do not. We have no contingency dollars currently.
So, if in the middle of the year, we find out that we're not getting any of the funding, we're stuck at the local level?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so I think that that's a big concern for our overall budget, this kind of gray area that we're in, and adding new staff is something that we have to consider very carefully, which I'm sure, I'm sure the Board of Ed did in the first place.
They did.
But things are changing very rapidly, and our overall town contingency fund is not really excessive. So, once we hire these people, we're stuck with them until the following year.
Yeah, and really, we base everything on need, of course, too, and this is just one of those, you know, with 42 students on a caseload, it just, it's, it doesn't work. We absolutely need, you know, another staff member. They can't get the job done, basically. There's not enough time to, you know, to see, to see students, and so, we need support there.
May I just ask publicly, what is the average caseload for the psychologist? I'll ask Kim, or?
An average is hard and varies. I mean, you know, like I said, right now, about 42 between each, at the middle school, the high school does have three school psychologists now, and that's working for them as well, which is why we felt it was appropriate to ask for a third for the middle school, and so they're gauging, I have to look it up for sure, Candace, but I would think about 20 each. You know, and at high school, they range from seeing kids once a month to seeing kids weekly, just based on their needs, so. But it allows them to focus, one of the school psychologists is really focusing on our specialty or high needs programs, and so is a resource to the teachers and the students in that program in a more intensive way, which they didn't have before, when just two school psychologists were covering the whole building. when just two school psychologists were covering the whole building.
Thank you.
I would assume that many of these students must have, do parents' insurance programs have benefits?
So we, we do have an outside organization that comes in and is housed in our school that provides counseling services to students, and that goes right through the parents' insurance. So that has been successful. I think they have, I don't know what their caseload is right now. Ken, do you know what?
Uh, no, they're only there two days a week.
Okay, it's Community Health Center.
Yeah, they're, and I think it's full.
I thought, last I heard, it was full. I haven't checked.
Yeah, I don't have a number for you on that. But that's different than the school psychologists see students?
Yeah, that's counseling.
Individualized education plan, and that's a community-based resource. Like, we call it outside counseling. So they can be talking about family issues or things like that. Our school psychologists are working with kids on things that set them accessing learning in the educational environment. So they are two different types of services. And sometimes kids will see our school psychologists for support on, say, social skills and navigating peer relationships, but also be seeing an outside counselor for managing stress or anxiety or depression or, you know, and for ID issues.
Thank you.
So that was great clarification, I just want to add, because I think when people hear psychologist, their first thought is that it's counseling, and it is something that can be accessed through your private insurance. So why one would question, not me, but one could say, "Well, then why are we going to go and hire this when it can be done because it cannot?" It's specific to learning, and that was great. Thank you.
Okay, at one point, all of the students were getting a free breakfast?
They were, and a free lunch at one point, too.
And that was with, was that primarily related to COVID?
Yes. That was of ARPA and SIR fund, funding at the state.
And so who was paying for that?
That was state-funded. Could have been some federal dollars that came to the state. That is no longer. So for this year, students are back paying for breakfast and lunch. There is talks about next year potentially, funding being available for free breakfast for all students. We don't know where that's going to go. But I'll tell you, the flip-flopping back and forth is problematic because I think families get confused. We're wondering what's going to happen. So, and again, that's all absent of any student that qualifies for, or family that qualifies for free and reduced services. So we'll see what next year brings.
So where would that funding come from to reserve that?
If, if it was free?
Yeah.
It would have to come from the state. I'm not exactly sure how they would allocate that, but the money would have to come from the state. And it would be, it would be millions. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, Tom?
On the technical side, you mentioned you had some people that you're doing joint venture with Waterford on mechanics, because they have the lift, and you're doing the EMT stuff. Both those numbers are singular numbers, meaning the people that are involved right now. If they were to be sent to tech schools, that's a state school, would you have to pay for them to go to the tech schools? I thought it was going to be fine.
Not the VoAG school. We pay a nominal fee for a magnet school, but not, not the VoAG, the VoAG schools. But it's roughly about six thousand dollars for a magnet, magnet school student.
We need technicians, we need EMTs.
We do, absolutely. That's why we're trying to grow those pathways programs. Oh, and you just made me think, too, another phenomenal program that we have, and this is a connection right here in town with Furman's Garage. So we have an early bird PE class. I was just there last week. We've got about eight students that are working. Will Furman, who owns, he's co-owner of Furman's Garage, he's there teaching with one of our instructors from the high school, and they do a phenomenal job. And it's a course where kids are getting, you know, credit for it, and we're able to use his shop. So that's another avenue. So we're trying to expand those avenues. We've got a number of pathways, experiences that we continue to try and grow to give kids opportunities. Welding, electrical, plumbing, nursing, all of those. So that's.
I just thought that the number was minimal, that you could delegate that to the Russell Tech or Norwich Tech or something like that, if long she didn't have to pay.
Yeah, if a student wants to go there. That's the other thing, oftentimes, kids are complex with, you know, "I want to stay here with my friends, but I want to do those trades," sort of thing, or a trade. And there's where we're trying to have those more offerings of that sort. As we know, some students aren't going to go to college. And there's some EB, keep pushing, they've got jobs left and right. You know, they're looking to hire people, and we're looking to support them. We've got a great partnership with EB, right down to work that we're doing at our elementary level in middle school through, with EB, some different activities for kids. We have kids doing welding with cheese and crackers, you know, through EB, you know, and different robotics types of things. So it's, it's neat. Anything else?
We just got this tonight.
Yes, you did, yes.
And it's voluminous.
It is, yes.
And if we, I think that we are, are we passing this on tonight? Mr. Cunningham, are we passing this on to the Board of Finance tonight?
We don't, we don't make decisions.
I think we will.
No, it's a passing on.
Yeah, we'll make, we'll make recommendations, but we don't have to make the recommendations, I don't believe, tonight. We have time to review it.
All right, then we have time if we had additional questions after we've reviewed the packet. And should we forward those questions through your office or directly to the superintendent?
What's most for you, Joe? Do we just forward directly to your office?
Absolutely, yeah. Mrs. Hardy, feel free to reach out to me anytime. Happy to, you know, to share any further information.
To be clear, though, this board does not make decisions on the Board of Education's budget.
No, no, it just gets moved on to the, yeah, to the Board of Finance.
No, but it behooves us to make a recommendation to the Board of Finance.
So it gets, it moves on to the Board of Finance, but we have the opportunity to make recommendations to the Board of Finance that they can use during their deliberation process. Are there any other questions?
I have no questions. Thank you for your presentation.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you for, thank you.
Yeah, no, happy to be here.
Appreciate the presentation. All right, so we will dive back into our budget deliberations. I believe we had, we accomplished quite a bit last meeting. I think we got through the entire book, is that right? Is that your question?
Well, no, we, I think we missed, we skipped something, I thought.
We skipped services to the community, and there were a couple that were blank in our flipbook.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I thought there was, was there another one, too?
Well, we had youth and family to come in.
Yeah, youth, family, and human services. I think that was one that?
We wanted to revisit.
Yeah, so it was those two, youth, family, and human services, and services to the community.
Okay, so, let's see. What, what number is youth?
It's way at the end.
Four-twenty-two. Four-twenty-five.
It's four-twenty-five. So what would we like to do? Do we want to address the youth and family services, go through that budget, and then we can turn our attention to the community requests? Or would you rather do the other first? Services to community or youth and family?
I'd like to do youth and family.
Youth, family, yeah.
Let's do the first. Let's get them, we'll be done with the book.
What number is it?
Uh, she's right at the end.
Four-twenty-five.
Oh, got it.
Sorry, I was looking up on the drawer.
Okay.
Okay.
So where we were at was the?
So by my recollections, there were, there were two issues that were coming up.
Yeah. One was Candace had some questions about the positions that were coming and going, and where the money was available, and why it wasn't going to a certain place. I was letting her speak to that. I, I wanted to, to find out more context. A lot of the boards came here and presented big numbers, you know, kind of broad overview of the operations of that group. And youth and family services, youth, family, human services did not. And I was just looking for more context, and more information, to give us a sense of scale. And she was gracious enough to provide us with that before the meeting. And I believe she's here to know if anyone has any questions about that.
Sarah, do you want to just come up to the podium? Do you mind?
Yeah, maybe that's the best one.
Thank you, and thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
I appreciate you. So some of the questions about the two positions when you guys had come a couple, well, last week, you and Don had come. And there was an explanation basically of funding one position with money that we have already allocated versus not funding it at all and taking the money back. So it's basically cost neutral. I knew that you would be able to speak to it much better than I can for everyone to re-listen and hopefully get that funded so that your program can, can run effectively and efficiently. So if you could do that.
Yeah, so that position that you're talking about, Candace, is the social worker position. That position fell under the Commission of Aging. And then we had decided that it made more sense for it to be under my department. So that position is moving over to youth and family July one. That position was a full-time position at thirty-seven and a half hours. Unfortunately, our social worker resigned. So during budget time, that position was dropped down to twenty-eight hours, and we would like to keep it at the thirty-seven and a half hours because the need is there.
I would imagine, too, that it would be more attractive to fill the position at thirty-seven and a half hours versus twenty-eight.
Oh, definitely, yes.
Okay. And there's a big difference between this position and, say, a position that we just talked about at the school district level, right? That's completely different.
This is completely different. The social worker position is for social service needs. So we're talking about fuel assistance, food pantries, food assistance programs, resume building, energy assistance, renters rebate, housing, those sort of things that the community needs access to and doesn't know where to turn to get those resources readily available to them.
And it's a wide range, right?
It is.
Of population that?
Yeah, so it would be all ages. So it would be, you know, families, individuals, and seniors. So just this past year, our social worker worked with thirteen families and then worked with sixty-eight seniors. For energy assistance, the number was a hundred and twenty-nine clients from Eastlime that were awarded energy assistance. And three-hundred-and-eighty-two clients in Nyanac were awarded energy assistance. For renters rebate, a hundred and ninety-four clients from the community ages sixty-five and older and/or disabled received that program. And then for protective services, twenty-four PSE referrals were made for our seniors.
Was PSE?
Protective services and?
Enforcement?
For elderly. And those referrals come from concerned community members, the police department, and Ledgeley.
I knew that you would do a better job than I. I know. So I just, I think that those numbers alone justify, you know, reallocating that position and adding it back in.
So let me just ask a question. So originally, the social worker was full-time?
Correct.
And was under the Commission of Aging? How was that paid for?
ARPA.
ARPA, okay. All right, and then?
Real quick, sorry, go on. Half of this year, we ran out of ARPA funds through twelve-thirty-one. And so January first on was town funds.
Of this year, we're in right now? Okay.
And that money came out or was withdrawn from the contingency fund?
ARPA.
But then?
No, that was budgeted. It was in, I believe, the youth service budget, correct?
A quarter that came out of my budget, yeah.
And then a quarter from social service, or senior center.
So it sounds like it was cobbled together kind of to begin with, and then when?
It was.
When it went away, it was, there was no legs to stand on.
But we have to keep in mind that come July one, had our social worker not resigned, she was going to be fully benefited full-time. So we were going to have that money in the budget for her. There were no plans to cut her hours.
It also sounds like there is a fiscal component to this that social workers can help people of the town get money through these services like energy assistance and rent abatements.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
Yes.
And you, you throw out numbers, like, hundreds of people are getting these benefits. To do away with that social worker means that the people of Eastlime stand to lose a significant chunk of aid that is available to them.
That is correct.
Hundred percent.
So besides the social worker, who else do you have working under youth, family, and human services?
Then I have my wellness and prevention coordinator. She's at twenty-eight hours currently. We had proposed to bump her up to full-time come January twenty-twenty-six. And then I have my part-time therapist. And she averages about six to eight hours a week. And then we have a preschool instructor who does preschool playgroup. And then I have my open center staff.
And the preschool instructor is how many hours?
She is during the academic year from September to June, and she averages about five hours per week.
And what does the, you said there's a PT therapist?
A part-time therapist for counseling services for substance abuse, mental health, or co-occurrence disorders. And that number, from March twenty-twenty-two until March now, she has had sixty-three referrals. So of those sixty-three, those have received counseling and/or been discharged from her services. She currently has a caseload of six with one open and potentially two. And two of those clients she has seen for the last three years. Three clients she sees bi-weekly, the other ones she sees weekly.
Is the wellness and prevention coordinator, is that on for this budget to be increased?
She's on for twenty-eight hours. We had proposed to bump her up to at least thirty-five hours come January twenty-twenty-six.
So she's part-time right now?
She's part-time right now.
The numbers certainly justify the need.
I agree.
Do you want to go up?
I'd just like to say a follow-up.
Yeah?
Go to the podium and, and that's.
Identify yourself.
Yep.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Barb Camiker. I'm Assistant Secretary of Care and Share at Eastlime. Most people know that. And we do use the social worker. We get three-hundred calls a month. And a lot of those are to schedule food, but a lot of them are people who are in dire need of help. I was at the pantry on Monday, and a woman got kicked out of the campground. Like, where does she go? What does she do? That was two days ago. So just, definitely support.
Thank you, Barb.
Yeah.
What were the numbers? I'm sorry, you recited some numbers of?
Three-hundred, is that?
We average about three-hundred phone calls a month asking for help. It's all volunteer. We have a hundred and thirteen volunteers. No one is paid. They, it's, it's an incredible amount of work everybody puts in. And we have fifteen responders who handle those calls five days a week. And it's amazing what they can do.
So you make referrals to youth and family?
Yeah, some of them have to go through social services. Some of them, each responder has a three-ring binder with lists of resources. So if they can, they'll say, call TV, CCA, whatever it is, you know, and other organizations, other food pantries, you know, they try to help. But we also have a budget. You know, we have many donors from the community, businesses, charitable organizations, faith-based, many great people do donate, so, okay.
Thank you, Barb.
You're welcome.
Should someone make a motion, perhaps?
Well, let's see what other, maybe there's more discussion or questions? I don't know. Roseanne?
I'm sorry.
You're all set?
Mm-hmm.
Jason, you said you had some questions or on a separate topic?
Well, I, I read the document that Sarah's pulling from and referred to, sent to us. Uh, well, I, I read the document that Sarah's pulling from and referred to, uh, sent to us earlier, so.
Yeah.
My, my sense of scale is, my questions about the sense of scale have been answered and, uh.
Okay.
I just, yeah, I would, I would, uh, I would echo what Candace says about, this is tremendous need in the community and, uh, you know, it's, it's not big and splashy and doesn't get everyone's attention like a fire or some kind of newspaper headline, but it's a slow-rolling, slow-burning crisis that affects people in our community. And I think it behooves us to address it.
Okay. Any other comments? Yeah?
Um. I'm kind of on the fence. Um, I guess what I would propose, or I would be in favor of, after hearing the discussion, I guess I would be in favor of doing the social worker who they already had and making that full-time. But I would keep the Wellness and Prevention Coordinator twenty-eight hours. I just feel that we really have, you know, budget constraints and, um, it's, you know, uh, I, I, I think that, you know, I would love to do this. I, I think it's great, but I just think there's budget constraints. That's how I see it.
But you would be in favor of restoring the one that was full-time to keep that full-time?
Yes, yeah, I, I think so. But the other Wellness and Prevention Coordinator, I would leave at the twenty-eight hours. Yeah, I would not do that full-time. That's, that's what I'm thinking. I don't know what anybody else thinks.
Candace, what are your thoughts?
Oh, I have so many.
Yep, well, we want to hear them.
So it started with, the budget comes to you, right? And then it came to us. And the Wellness Coordinator's position, it had looked as though it was a go, and correct me if I'm wrong, okay? But the other position, the social worker's position, even though it had already been in their budget, was not going, it, it wasn't going to happen because what I got from the last meeting was it was going to be, um, a cost savings. Is that accurate? Because I asked for the amount of money that we would be saving.
It was a reduction that was resulted in a cost savings.
Right.
Yeah.
And I had said that it almost seemed as though we're trying to save kind of a minimal amount of money. I don't know if you have the number offhand, but on the cost of, on the backs of children. That's kind of where I'm going. And I, I know that that's probably not something that somebody wants to hear me say publicly, but that's kind of what it is. Right? We identify the need. We know there's a need. We know that this new program, literally, that just started, is overflowing with referrals from our own people in our own town. And on this enormous budget, we're gonna try to save money here. So I am absolutely not in favor of that. So I had asked for the social worker to continue on as it is in their budget. The Wellness Coordinator to stay, and that's what I would like to see.
So, so is your position is that the, um, one that was reduced to part-time, you would want, it, it was in their budget before, you would want to restore it, that individual for both times?
That was the only thing, right. And we're not touching the wellness because the wellness was there. Cause you had left it there. Am I accurate there?
That was the only, uh.
Okay. So we're asking to restore it. Is that accurate?
We're asking for the Wellness and Prevention Coordinator to go from twenty-eight hours to thirty-five at least.
And when would that start?
January twenty twenty-six.
Okay. And the social worker position?
To keep that full-time, yeah, full-time.
To restored to full-time.
And I believe Kevin, you are pushing numbers around to show us a visual of this, correct?
And I appreciate that. I know that's, that's hard on the cuff for numbers, so I appreciate you doing that.
Okay.
I'd like to hear from Don.
Don, do you have any?
I'll wait till Kevin's back.
Yep.
The only reason I say, I know, while we, he's doing that, we're not heartless. We're here to cut budgets and try to make things affordable. However, you coming back tonight, nice job. And you too, your numbers from Care and Share. That, that kind of quantifies things and, and I think it's, I think in my own heart, it's a smaller decision to make now. Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so what are we, what are we talking about here? Half at twenty-eight, the other half at thirty-seven and a half, thirty-five? What was the proposal?
I believe.
Wellness and Prevention, thirty-five. Social worker back to thirty-seven and a half.
Uh, thirty-seven and a half for a social worker the whole time?
It was already there.
It was?
Yes.
So we don't need to increase it, uh, twenty-one thousand? So the new number is one oh nine seventeen.
So what number is one oh nine seventeen? The.
That is the.
The ninety-one two eighty?
Yeah.
So that would go to what, one oh, one oh nine?
One oh nine seventeen.
Where did the one thirty-eight seven oh five come from? What was that then?
That was a, uh, that was the halftime, uh, halftime slash full-time prevention coordinator, um, a case manager, and the social worker, so an additional case manager.
Oh, okay, understood.
So that one oh nine oh one seventy accommodates both of those changes?
That accommodates a, um, six months of a part-timer, six months of a full-timer, and then, uh, a year of full-time social work.
So wait, say it again, I'm sorry. One more time. A year of social work.
Full year, full-time, FTE, uh, FTE for social work, so full-time equivalent. And then point five for the prevention wellness coordinator, I guess. Actually, it's probably like point eight eight.
And does that include, so the full-time would include benefits?
That's not inclusive in that twenty-one thousand dollar number.
That doesn't include any of the?
No, no, benefits are forty thousand dollars for health insurance per person.
Yeah, that's.
So if we, um, if we look at the cost, including the health insurance, what, what, what would the, what would the delta be? What would the change be, uh, by doing this?
These are an up C U, so we're assuming.
And that's to do full-time social worker, and what was the other one? Is it?
Adding half.
Half prevention wellness coordinator?
Yeah.
So that would not be with benefits, um?
Not.
It will be in a second. Once you hit thirty hours, we're required to give the benefits. Um, so that would go, so that's an increase of.
So we'll be picking up benefits on one individual, correct?
One and a half. Cause, uh, after January first, that person gets health insurance, retirement, vacation, personal time.
Point five.
Um, so on, just on health insurance, that would be fifty thousand dollars.
And, okay.
Did we, I, for some reason, it's coming to me, so correct me if I'm wrong. Did we talk about the possibility of utilizing fun, mon, money coming in from, um, the new marijuana, um, oh, I can't.
The cannabis dispensary. Yes, three percent cannabis tax.
So the cannabis dispensary.
Mm-hmm.
And I recall conversation about, okay, if we went with the social worker and then we held off a little bit on the wellness, but then come back in six months and see where we're at with that and possibly utilize some of the funding from, that we would be getting in, or some of the revenue, excuse me, uh, to help pay for that. Was that accurate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Kevin had talked about the cannabis grant, but he doesn't have those numbers yet.
He doesn't have the numbers.
We don't, we don't.
Yeah, we don't have that. Haven't gotten a bill yet.
So, I mean, the thought was, you know, if, if we didn't make any change tonight, uh, and then we have, um, an experience curve with the cannabis money, uh, that maybe there would be a way to achieve, uh, you know, what Candace is proposing and what's being considered, uh, without growing the budget. Is, is that, have I got that right, Kevin? Is that the potential, if we could?
Um, so I think you, yeah, I, I think as long as it's for, um, the cannabis money is restricted. It's not like, you know, well, we can pay anything with that. It would have to be the individual that falls under that grant would have to fall under that grant guidance of, you know, educating for, you know, drug-related, teach, you know, things.
So would that fall under Youth, Family, and Human Services then?
Yeah.
Sarah, come back.
Yeah, I imagine, yeah.
Yeah, that would fall under the Wellness and Prevention Coordinator.
Okay, I just want to make sure, if we're gonna use this money, I don't want them later on to say, oh, you didn't use it properly.
Sarah, you have favorites.
Yeah, we, we, it would be, we'd make sure it followed grant guidance, yeah.
Okay, all right, you just want to make sure it would follow, that's all, okay.
Who did the work before we had a social worker?
For social services?
Yeah.
Um, myself, when I got the calls, and I would say probably Kristen, the director for the senior center.
Okay.
And it sounds like a fleet of helpful volunteers at Care and Share.
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, there's always. So.
So do we want to think about it? I mean, I think we've been, I know I've made it pretty clear on what I'm looking for, right?
Yeah, I know, I understand. I mean, we would like to button this up.
You have some time to think about it, right? You have some time.
We need to button this up tonight if we can, you know, and.
I mean, my proposal would be to, the social worker and keep the Wellness and Prevention Coordinator at the twenty-eight hours. That's, that's, that's what my motion would be. I know Candace, you want more, and that's fine, yeah, you know.
We can work it out.
And then if they want to come back.
Up to thirty means no benefits though, right?
Under thirty, yeah, thirty, yeah, it's like twenty, twenty-nine.
Under, yeah, so, so you do twenty-eight, and then if there's something else later on, you know, maybe revisit it. That's.
What are your thoughts on it, Sarah? Is that something? I'm asking, I'm asking, I'm asking so that I have a clear, moving forward, how they can provide the best services for our town. She's going to be the, she's gonna be able to tell us, not just me, whether or not the social worker component is going to be more beneficial at this point versus the wellness. I don't need her permission, okay? I'm just asking for what's going to work. Is that okay?
You can ask her whatever you want.
Well, you seemed as though that it was an issue by me asking.
No, it's no issue.
I'm asking for clarity, that's all.
Let's just move on.
Well, both positions are essential. With not making the Wellness and Prevention Coordinator full-time, we risk losing her. She's going for her masters right now. We won't be able to continue to provide the programs that the community needs to meet the needs of not only our students, but our adults and our seniors. So both positions are essential. They do two separate things. So they both really should be full-time.
Okay.
So what would they, if we, if, if we did both and with the benefits, what would the hit be to, to our budget?
Um.
With benefits?
Swell me back, James. Sorry, buddy.
Is it the?
Come on, it's, uh. I mean, the two big factors are health insurance, the health insurance and salaries. We're talking twenty-one, one, 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 one. Negative, two, one, one, one. Second, everybody. Uh, so if we do the one, one point five, so Jan. 1, uh, for the Wellness Prevention Coordinator and full-time for social worker, it's about seventy-one thousand dollars combined for health insurance and wages, um. That's all I had. There's, there's other things, like eventually we'd come down, it would increase our pension, but it's not really quantifiable at the moment until that person starts becoming closer to, uh, uh.
So.
Tenured or whatever the word is.
If we, if we restored, if we went the full route here, um, as I think Candace would prefer, am I right? I mean, it.
I, I think when you're looking at it from a whole perspective for our entire community, our, our entire community is going to benefit from it, yes.
And so that's, that's seventy-one thousand to go that way. If we were to, um, and, and your suggestion is to do what, the one?
The social worker and then do the twenty-eight hours for the Wellness Prevention Coordinator. And then see what happens with the, the NIPS and the cannabis and all the rest of that.
What would that cost us, Kevin, if you can?
So just full, um.
The one full?
One part-timer, one full-timer. Um, da, 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 just drop this to one. And then go over here, pull up the spreadsheet, and this would be twenty-eight hours we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. Sixteen oh two eight. Negative sixteen oh two eight. Forty-nine two forty-seven. Sorry for this being so small, guys, but.
What was the other one?
Seventy-one. So if we, if we went with the forty-nine two forty-seven, and then we have the good fortune to get money from the cannabis, you know, money, um, then we would have a place to be able to spend that money that, um, satisfies, uh, the use requirements of that money, correct? That gives us a place to put it. If we, if we go right now in the budget to the seventy-one, we may not have a place, if, even if we get that money, we may not have a legitimate place to spend it.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I guess my feeling, I mean, there's no motion on the table, but.
No, we're discussing it.
But my feeling is I, I, I think I support Ann's position with the forty-nine two forty-seven, and then we'll, we take the wait and see on the cannabis money. And if it materializes, then, uh, we can use that, um, to, to, to make it both full-time.
So you would earmarking it for that wellness position?
Yeah, I mean, we could just, I mean, we could, I don't know how they do it in Congress, but we could just, I think, make an agreement that that's our understanding.
Yeah.
Put it on the record that.
Yeah, we can put it on the record that that's our understanding.
Money and stuff.
Yeah.
If that.
I feel like that's fair.
Yeah.
You, you?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jason, what's your feeling on that?
I'm very pleased with the course of the discussion. I, I agree.
Yeah, I think it's good.
Then, anyone else, Roseanne? Then why don't we, uh, Ann, why don't you articulate your motion, and let's see if it, we get a second.
I think I need numbers though, to articulate it, don't I? So I, um, I'm not really sure where I go with that.
Uh, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
Yes, if we just, um, hold on, let me just tie this out. Okay, that ties out. If we do just the salary piece, we have to revisit the general government benefits anyway.
Exactly, that's.
We found some savings there. So if we just, if you do a motion for.
Is it the one oh nine zero one seven?
Uh, it's, um, I think it's one oh three. Just make sure, okay, so if we do, um, so you're gonna increase the line by sixteen, sixteen thousand twenty-eight dollars.
And that would.
And that's the, the five one six one nine?
Correct.
Correct.
Yep, to a new total of one oh three nine thirty-four.
One oh three.
Nine thirty-four.
Okay, all right, so, um, I'll make a motion on Youth, Family, and Human Services, line five one six one nine, uh, program coordinator, secretarily administered, to change the budget from ninety-one thousand two hundred and eighty to increase it by sixteen thousand twenty-eight dollars to a total of one hundred three thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars.
One second.
We have a second with Candace. All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Uh, no, let's, uh, any further discussion? All right, uh, all in favor, say goodbye, say hi.
Hi.
opposed? All right. Motion carried.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for, thank you for addressing it tonight and filling us in. All right. So, um, is there anything else in the, in the big book here that we have?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. If you guys have anything. But I have, I have some savings we can realize here.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, so driving home, and I was looking at health insurance, so if we flipped to general government, I think it's one fourteen.
Wait, let me get that.
Yep, so just flip there, so I just, I was thinking to myself, how can we be up twenty percent for health insurance if we're only budgeting for twelve percent? Well, so I, I looked through the numbers. We had the admin staff for the water and sewer department in there. So if you go to the health insurance tab, I don't know if you have health insurance tab, but I'll just show you. Um, there should, no, no, there should be a tab within that section, like maybe one or two pages in. You'll see we had two family plans, an employee plus one plan, and a single plan. So there's four health insurance individuals we were picking up in this budget that we can now take out. So, that's why I didn't want you to make a motion on the health insurance with the social worker because we can net those together. So, that's why I didn't want you to make a motion on the health insurance with the social worker, because we can net those together.
Yeah.
Okay, so I.
I kind of, you know, kind of lost me, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see what page you're talking about.
I don't either.
Three of six.
Narrative? Or are you talking about some hard numbers?
Three of six?
The hard, the, the hard numbers. So essentially.
And we're looking under?
Fifty-two eight hundreds?
Oh.
Yep, so if we look at, if we just.
Under health, mental care?
What'd you say, Candace?
I forgot, did he?
He's on it. Um, okay, so if we just, real quick, there's a few numbers besides the health insurance, just want to walk through.
Yep.
Workers' compensation comes in at three percent flat pending, we don't add anybody. Um, I, I think we can get away this year with just doing three percent instead of the three and a half I had suggested. That's roughly a two thousand dollar savings. Um, same with the pension, I, I, I'm sorry, the pension we're increasing because we have to pay for defined contribution valuation. But, uh, on the health insurance side, you can see we're deducting approximately a hundred and forty thousand dollars from that line, so even if we add that full-time social worker, we're still gonna cut about a hundred K from that line. Just let me make sure the numbers work here for that two six oh six.
Alright, just tell me what I need to say.
Two six oh six, two four nine three, two four nine three. Okay, so that's with the tenth person, okay. Okay, I'll just delete this so this doesn't screw my formula. So two six oh six will be inclusive of, um, the social work position, so we can still cut it back. Let me just pull this up real quick. This one, uh, we can cut this back, a hundred and thirty-six thousand five thirty. And we added that position in there, that number, so.
And what, which number?
Where does that show up, yeah, on the front?
Five two eight hundred, health and dental.
Five two eight hundred.
So.
So it becomes?
Your reduction is how much?
The new number is two million six oh six four fifty-one.
Okay. Now, so question, do I need to make a motion now, or do you want to wait till?
Well, you made, you already voted on the last one, right?
Yes.
Okay, you're good with that one, so unless, there's no other, I mean, unless you're cutting positions, that, that's.
This is it, okay, so let me make a motion then.
Yep.
Okay, under government miscellaneous and benefits, um, number five two eight hundred, health slash dental care, um, move that the, um, number go from two million seven hundred forty-two thousand nine hundred eighty-one be reduced by one hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and thirty dollars to two million six hundred and six thousand four hundred fifty-one dollars.
I second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, motion carries.
Grace, talk, Kevin. Before we move off this, do we need to talk about that shaving that three, three and a half percent down to three?
Correct.
For the con.
Yep. Let me just, uh, before you guys go there, let me just make sure we update this budget book.
Could have Matthew Trump, boy.
Six oh six, four five one, six oh six, four five one, okay. Um, yep, so we can cut two thousand seventy-six dollars from the workers' compensation line.
Okay.
So the new amount would be what?
New amount, four two seven eight one two.
Alright, do I hear a motion?
Alright, under government miscellaneous and benefits, number five two seven zero zero, workers' compensation move to, um, decrease the number from four hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars, decrease it by two thousand seventy-six dollars to four hundred twenty-seven thousand eight hundred twelve dollars.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Do I have a second? Alright, any discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, motion carries. Ann, this one.
Do we have, we have a town meeting at seven, correct?
Correct.
We have fifteen minutes, and we have services to the community to get through?
I think there's also an agenda item on the.
Go ahead. I think we have several people here that would like to be able to answer questions on services to the community.
Can we, there are also people who wanted to be here but could not be here. In the spirit of fairness and the expedience of time, perhaps we do not take comments from the heads of these, um, organizations.
I mean, it's, you know, I think it's our discretion, um, I think.
Don't we have, wait, do we have, we don't have budget deliberations at seven at, at that meeting, correct?
No, we don't.
No, we have a home other meeting, okay.
Is it on the agenda now? Is that on the agenda as well?
What'd you say?
It's, I think it's on that agenda as well, I thought.
Is it on the seven, we could add it.
Everyone, hold on, I, I need one more motion for the government-wide, for the general government, if we can. So just so, uh, we, um, so, uh, just recently, uh, during the pension board,
Oh, oh, wait, hang on, just shut it.
So the defined benefit pro plan we have, which is our pension, we pay, um, an investment advisor to oversee those funds and make recommendations to manage those. We do not have that for a defined contribution for the employees that have the four oh one A and the four fifty-seven, so we just had that re, um, you know, reshuffled, I so, guess, so you speak, to new funds, but there's no advisor to oversee that. Our pension advisor did it pro bono or, or for, just to help us out this one time, but in order to bring him in, it's twelve thousand dollars a year to do that for the defined contribution. And I think it's a worthwhile investment for the, for the, for the fund to have, uh, the manager look at this, the advisor look at this. So if we could, if we could do that for the retirement line to add it for twelve thousand dollars, that would.
So that's the retirement liability line?
Correct. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so.
So we're getting plus twelve, so it'll be what, s- one sixty-two?
Nope, nope, so the new number is one million thirteen thousand six eighty-three.
One million.
I am, I am not with you here. Where is that?
Yeah, no, I, I'm not either. Wait, you're adding twelve thousand dollars.
Yes, to the pension retirement line, the third one down, pension slash retirement.
Oh, okay, gotcha now.
Oh, okay, that one. Yeah, okay, so what's the new number?
One million thirteen thousand six eight three.
Oh, I see now, okay, got it. Alright, under, I'll make a motion, under government miscellaneous and benefits, line five two nine oh five, uh, pension slash retirement, to increase the number of one million, uh, one thousand six hundred eighty-three dollars by twelve thousand dollars to have it be one million thirteen thousand six hundred eighty-three dollars.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do I have a second? Alright, any further discussion?
I have further discussion.
Okay.
So, this is from savings realized by moving a correction on line five two eight zero zero?
No, this was really just when I reviewed this budget in more depth, um, last couple days, I, I saw a few of these errors, and I've been meaning to put this twelve thousand dollars in, and I noticed when I was looking at our detailed listing, it wasn't in there, so I, I, we need, you know, I think we should put that back in, correct?
That's for audit, audit advice.
And there are many people in this room that are, and many more at home perhaps watching, that have come down here tonight to hope to shake loose less than twelve, twelve grand. And I just want to make clear that we're all making this decision pretty quickly, it's kind of procedural, to get this budget to work, correct?
So just, so what this is, um, so we have a proc- over four million dollars of our employees' funds that we're custodians of. We've, we have, uh, funds that these monies sit in, that the town designates or allows the employees to invest in. For the last, you know, decade or so, no one's been managing these funds. So these funds, you know, can change managers, um, could have new philosophies. No one's monitoring that, right? So this advisor monitors this on a, a bi-annual basis, twice a year, goes before the pension board and advises whether there should be funds that should be changed or not. Does that make sense? This is really.
It does, I'm just, I'm, I'm feeling that the flow of this is being rushed and, I mean, we just spent, you know, a half hour on poor Sarah Furman's time for, you know, a small amount of money. I just want to keep in context that we are adding twelve grand to this line and just kind of moving on ahead.
Yeah, but just to clarify, it's a small amount of money, but then it's continual amount of money every year. It's not like it's a one-time deal.
Twelve thousand a year.
So once you add somebody in to the, to the, you know.
Oh, I see what you're saying, like Sarah Furman's case.
You know what I mean? Yeah, so you've got, you know, thirty, forty, fifty years.
But this would be a one-time deal, or is this?
No, no, this is annual, this is an annual, an annual boss to bring in a professional to oversee this management of the funds.
Yeah, this is annual, yeah.
Right, but what this allows having this professional, uh, presumably would, to increase the performance of that fund where we have our pension dollars in.
Okay, so we could.
But also to have a professional, yeah, look at this.
Yeah.
There's a potential to get one of them.
I'm glad that you actually said what you said, Jason, cause I, I want to speak a little bit about it, because my interpretation of this also is protection. Um, so coming out of conversations that we have been having for a few months now on pensions, mishaps, not catching this and that, and twenty years going by, okay? Um, and then finding ourselves in a position where, whoa, we're, we're in trouble here. For me, this is almost like an investment to protect, uh, all of us, not just our employees, but us as well, to make sure that things are getting done correctly, and if they're not, they're caught. Is that accurate?
Accurate.
Okay, so that, so when I started to hear that, I kind, my head went back to these past few months, that's what I identified that as. So I would be in support of that, just knowing what we've been through and kind of where I never want to see East Lyman again.
This is a pension advisor, was it?
Defined contribution.
Defined contribution.
It's the same advisor that does our pension as well, right? So it's kind of like add-on to the, a contract we already have with them.
Right. So it's another layer of.
Advisory services.
Advisory and.
Protection.
Yep.
No, I have no further comment on that, thank you.
Okay, good questions, good.
Yep.
Okay, so is there, we have a first and a second, correct?
Yeah.
Alright, and any further discussion? Satisfied? Alright, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, the motion carries.
One more cut we can make. This is the good, the good way. We can cut, uh, the bottom part, um, forty-three hundred and sixty-six dollars from, uh, the P D and L insurance line. Uh, hold on, I'll get you the number.
Where is that?
The three oh five six oh eight at the bottom, insurance, P D and L. Flip, flip your pages.
P D and L, so three oh five six oh eight, so we're.
We can go down to three oh one two four two.
Three oh one, what?
Three oh one two four two.
Two four two, and we're decreasing by how much?
We're decreasing by forty-three sixty-six. We're just making these accounts a lot tighter, so there's no, there's, you've had a dollar wickel room in any of these accounts now.
Alright, I'll make a motion, government miscellaneous and benefits, um, number five five two zero zero, insurance, P D and L. The number, uh, three, three hundred five thousand six hundred and eight dollars, we're gonna decrease by four thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars to bring it down to three hundred one thousand two hundred forty-two dollars.
Okay, do I hear a second? Second. Alright, any, uh, any further discussion? You sure? Okay. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, motion carries.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just wanted to get those in there.
Yeah, no, that's excellent.
Alright.
Not so easy money, but.
So I guess, is this our last, uh, I know we got a meeting here in five minutes. Is it, is it on, did anyone look at the agenda to see if it's on there? Cause if not, we have.
It is not on there, but I think there's enough appetite to add this to the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll just.
Just we have to vote on this, the CIP, ten-year.
We will, uh, we'll adjourn this meeting.
Do we have to vote on this budget before we adjourn this meeting?
I don't know if you put it on the agenda later.
Yeah, if we're putting it on the agenda, then.
Oh, yeah, of course, of course.
We have several people that came to comment this evening on various aspects of the budget, and after the town meeting, will there be a possibility for them to speak?
Speak on the, yeah, public delegation, right?
Just public delegation.
Yeah, there's public delegation, sure.
Yep, so, alright, let me, uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Um, I'll move to adjourn the, uh.
Can I ask a question? The services to the community discussion agenda item, what happened to that?
We're, we're gonna add that to.
The town meeting will not be long.
The town meeting's gonna take a few, few minutes.
It'll be quick.
Five minutes probably. Okay, so I'm gonna move to adjourn the, um, special meeting of the Board of Selectment on March fifth, twenty twenty-five at six fifty-five P M.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we're adjourned.